Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to the June 18th regular meeting of the Zion City Council. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Here.
Commissioner Brereton? Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Mayor McKinney?
Here. Item number three is Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Berman, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Thank you, Mr. Berman. All right. Leading us in prayer this evening is Gary Garland from Love Inc. Give us some love.
(Laughter) (Inaudible) 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 Heavenly Father, we are grateful to live in a country where we can openly pray for our leaders and for the city which they serve. We lift up our local leaders this evening. We pray for the mayor, for the missionaries, for his fire chiefs, and all who serve Zion. Send out upon them the spirit of wisdom, charity, and grace to prepare them for the heavy burdens which they carry. Many of those burdens residents may never even know. We pray that with steadfast purpose, they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people. And we ask all of us through prayer to help. Amen.
Thank you very much. Item number four is Agenda Changes. Do any of the commissioners have agenda changes? Is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented? It's a move.
Second.
Motion by McDowell, second by Holmes. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. We have number five, the citizens' comments. We have Vincent Machella. Does that say that, pronounce that properly?
Yes.
So, did you have something that you wanted to say? That's usually our citizens' comments section.
Uh, no. Two weeks ago, when you were here, I was instructed to just sign in if there was a chance that we may speak if called upon. Um, we represent, quote, Colin and I represent the CCA Solar.
Okay.
So, we just wanted to make sure that we were here.
All right. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome. Given that, we don't have any Colin that's here, Colin Walker. We'll move on to item number six, which is the Consent Agenda.
Approval of minutes of a regular meeting held on June 4th, 2024 at 7:00 p.m.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Make the motion.
Motion by Holmes, second. Second by McDowell. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Four to zip.
Bills, vouchers 146, 189 through 146, 294, run on Hunter to National Bank. Total $661,982.37.
Is there a motion to approve the bill?
I'll move to approve the bills.
Motion by Fisher, second by McDowell. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Four to zip. Item number seven, Consider Passing Resolutions as Follows. 7A, Appointing Certain Members to the Lake Consolidated Emergency Communications Member Board of Directors Per Chief Street.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I don't believe a memo was prepared, but going along with the next couple of items, as we move forward with, essentially entering into an agreement with Lake County Consolidated Emergency Communications Center, one of the first items is to appoint city representatives to Lake County. And we're very early in the process, but typically, the appointed director from the municipality or the village, whatever it happens to be, in our case, obviously, City of Zion, would be either the president or the mayor or the city administrator. And I guess our recommendation would be the city administrator to be our director with the mayor as the alternate. However, Mayor, if you are really wanting to be the city director to Lake County, I don't think anybody would stand in our way. But the recommendation would be Administrator Nabel be our director and you assume the role of the alternate director to Lake County on City of Zion's behalf.
I would concur that Administrator Nabel would be an excellent person to serve that role. Congratulations.
Thank you.[327.83][327.83](Laughter) It was a tough race, that. I won.[331.31][331.31](Laughter)
So, the way the resolution is worded is that the mayor is appointed as the principal and the city administrator as the alternate. But should we just, can we amend that?
We amend it as it's based.
What's that?
We get amended on its face.
I think, I think we, the recommendation was to have the mayor, but then have it as his designation, I think is what they implied.
Of course, as the principal, you can, you know, send your alternate every time.
Detention?
Yeah.
Yeah, all kinds of stuff. Okay. We will amend it. Do we need a motion to amend?
Well, I think, I think Commissioner McDowell has just made the motion. I'll second.
All right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Four to zip. Item number F.
Now, we need a motion on the amended?
Oh, I, I thought my motion was to amend it.
Right. And now it's been amended and then we motion on the substantive.
Oh, I see. I'll see. Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the resol, the amended resolution. All right. Motion by McDowell, second by Fisher. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Four to zip. Item number eight, Consider Passing Ordinances Followed. 8A, Authorizing and Approving an Intergovernmental Agreement Establishing the Joint Emergency Telephone System Board of Lake County Per Chief Barton.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. And Commissioners, so a couple of weeks ago, we presented to you this, this board, the IGA between us and Lake County for establishing the new jet speed. This would allow us to dissolve our current jet speed and migrate those funds, if they are remaining, into the new jet speed fund and be a part of that as our new.
All right. Is there a motion? So, move. Motion by McDowell, second by Holmes. Questions or discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Four to zip. Moving on to 8B, Authorizing and Approving an Intergovernmental Agreement Establishing Lake Consolidated Emergency Communications Per Chief Barton.
Thank you again, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. Again, a couple of weeks ago, presented to this, this board, the IGA between the City of Zion and Lake County Consolidated Emergency Communications Center, commonly known as Lake County. I would request approval of this IGA to join, since we have a telephone system set.
Is there a motion? So, move. Motion by McDowell, second, second by Fisher. Questions or comments from any of the Commissioners? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Four to zip. Motion, item number 8C, Approving an AI agreement authorizing Comosi Inc. to act as the construction manager for Fire Station 2, number two, per Administrator Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. A few months ago, we selected Comosi as our CM for the project. Basically, they start the process and help us with architect selection and then oversee the construction, the bid process, the construction process, as we go through the construction of Fire Station 2. All those scopes of services are spelled out in this A133 agreement. There's also an A201 agreement that basically kind of sets the rules for the construction before we play the game, that everyone has to abide by and what the, what the terms of that are. So, the A133 sets up the, the rate in terms for Comosi as CM and the A201 will be for construction. I would like to make two minor changes in what's in the packet. There's reference in here to July 18th, but it's actually June 18th for today's meeting. Not a big deal, but on page five of the A133, it talks about allowing the construction manager to approve with our approval work up to $35,000 without going out to bid. I want to change that to $25,000 to match our bid threshold. $35,000 is allowed by state statutes, but ours is a little more conservative. So, other than that, I recommend approval as presented. We do have a representative from Comosi here if there are any questions. Matt W. I never get it right.[638.16][638.16](Laughter)
Most people don't.
Yeah. Matt W.[643.11][643.11](Laughter)
We do not have a motion to amend it.
So, I recommend approval of the, of the agreement as presented.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve? So, move. But as amended, right?
So, it's an excellent point, Commissioner, Mr. Chair, tonight, if you trust me.
May. I'll give you a floor.
Thank you, sir. On our section four of the agreement, that insertions, admissions, and changes are authorized by the corporate authorities and authorized with the direction of a mayor or designated. So, I assume your motion is, as amended, that's fine, but we don't need to make the two motions like we did in the last one.
I'll second. So, motion by McDowell and second by Fisher. Any questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Four to zip. Item number nine, Discussion, Authorization, Approval. 9A, Consider Zoning Docket 24Z-15, An Ordinance Requesting a Special Use Permit to Section 102, 504A1 of the Zion Municipal Code to Operate 4.95 MW Ground-Mounted Solar Power Generating Facility for the Property Located at 41, 41820 and 41822 North Green Bay Road. Per Director Ianson, Planning and Zoning Commission Recommends Approval.
Thank you, Your Honor. Pre-made community energy initiative LLC, a special use permit from Section 102, 504A1 of the Zion Municipal Code to Operate 4.95 MW Ground-Mounted Solar Power Generating Facility. The rates would be approximately fewer of 3 feet to 5 feet in height. There's an older, relooking, but existed wooded area, and we've got to plan additional weather trees on Green Bay side of Green Bay Road. Majority of the property is classified as wetland and be more appropriate uses. The June 6th, 2024, when we told the Mission, there would be to approve special use permit.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the special use permit as requested.
Motion by Fisher and second by Holmes. Questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item 9B, Consider Zoning Docket 24Z-16, An Ordinance Requesting a Variant from Section 10-13B for a wire mesh fence for property located at 41820 and 41822 North Green Bay Road. Per Director Ianson, Planning and Zoning Commission Recommends Approval.
Thank you, Your Honor. This memo addresses the next two dockets, their human plus variants for fence and grid for gravel driveway. Pre-made community energy initiative LLC, a special use permit from Section 1, 10-13B for a wire mesh fence, and Section 26B for gravel driveway. The code fence is designed to be broad but friendly, and be raised above 7 feet above ground, and the movement is approximately 150 feet wide. The proposed gravel driveway will assist in the need and requirements for broad light range. If the June 6th, 2024, the planning and zoning commission recommends to approve the harness request.
Is there a motion to approve the variants?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Fisher?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Four zip. Item number 9C, Consider Zoning Docket 24Z-16, An Ordinance Requesting a Variant to Section 26-3084 of the Zion Municipal Code for gravel driveway, driveway for property located at 41820 and 41822 North Green Bay Road. Per Director Ianson, Planning and Zoning Commission Recommends Approval.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is the second version of the question, for gravel driveway.
All right. Is there a motion?
Make the motion.
Motion by Holmes?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Four to zip. Item number 9D, Consider Zoning Docket 24Z-17, An Ordinance Requesting a Special Use Permit from Section 70-128. Two of the Zion Municipal Code to Install Any Electronic Message Boards for property located at 2225 Lewis Avenue. Per Director Ianson, Planning and Zoning Commission Recommends Approval.
Thank you, sir. Matt Lasker, I'm on the first line and discuss use for section 72 of the Zion Municipal Code, and they call it private message board, pending final order. Zion will be the same size and paint and located with the same old finish as the city of Zion. The June 6th, 2024, the planning and zoning commission recommends to approve special use permit.
Is there a motion?
Make the motion.
Motion by Holmes, second, second by McDowell. Questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Four to zip. Item number 9E, Tabulation of Bids, 2024 Street Program, Per Director Roberts.
Thanks, sir. Attention of the bid results for 2024 Street Program held on June 6th. The Lewis responsible bidder was Peter Baker and Sons in Leavenon, Illinois, for base bid and the alternate bid. The basement would include 31st Street from Lewis Avenue to Lebanon Avenue and Lebanon Avenue from 31st Street to Galway, and the alternate one bid was from 31st Street from Lebanon Avenue to Galway, North. The staff requests and recommends a board of base bid and alternate one bid for this project, Peter Baker and Sons, in the amount of $680,992.80. Funding for this project is approved, approved items in the fiscal year 25, MFP, Ash Street and Bridge Fund. Copies of the bid debt will be posted on the city website.
All right. Is there a motion for the tabulation of bid?
Some.
Motion by Holmes and second by Fisher. Questions or comments?
How many miles?
1.3.
And the complete, completion of the project?
What's that, sir?
And when is the completion of the project, the start and completion?
We don't have a schedule from the contractor yet. We'll have that after the move is high, if you want to do it.
All right. I tell you what, that's, it's great news because that's an area that really needs it. I lived on 31st Street for many years, and that was definitely a challenging area. So, glad that we're getting that done. Thank you, Director Roberts. We had a motion, second. And Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Four to zip. And you were looking at me, eyeballing me, because you were going to remind me to call the roll, weren't you?[1116.41][1116.41](Laughter) Yes, yes, you were. All right. Item number 9F, Consider Proposal from Christopher Burke Engineering for Professional Engineering Services for the 20th Street Deco Stormwater Capital Improvement Program, Per Director Roberts.
Thank you, sir. As we move forward with 20th Street Deco Stormwater Capital Improvement Program, we have identified an additional sanitary and water may be required due to the size of the proposed storm. The attached proposal provides the final design, engineering requirements, and includes additional design for the water and sanitary. Staff request and recommends approving this proposal for engineering services from Christopher Burke Engineering for a cost of $25,500. Funding for the services will be budgeted items within the fiscal year 25 of water cost.
Is there a motion to approve the proposal from Christopher Burke Engineering?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Holmes?
I'll second.
Second by Fisher. Questions or comments?
Director Roberts, where does this put us on the timeline for starting that stormwater project?
It's still in the works.
Okay.
Phase one was approved, twenty. Phase two is going to approve. We will be bringing an IGA in front of a council here in Bermejo for agreement between Lake County and the city. And then we'll start working on schedule. The proposed bid, bid is going to be end of this year, of course, to make.
Okay.
To go up to pay one of them.
Right.
And then we'll take a look after that as far as final approval of the 32.
Okay. For those who, who may not know, this section, the 20th Street area, they are subject to flooding.
Major flooding.
And so, this project, which we have been working on for since, yeah, since I was first elected, is, I know we were talking about it then.
It's taking a, currently a 30-inch storm, quite, and we're going to increase it to the size of a 78, to handle all the water.
And all the water, because there are people, literally, they have water running through their garages and through their basements and their yards, because the system just can't handle it, so.
And this is part of the flood, the flood gravitation that you put in for the grass or stormwater, incontingent with Lake County for 5.5 minutes. Plausible weakness. It's probably a emergency.
Thank you, President.
Thank you, President. All right. A worthwhile project for the people that have been impacted in that area for so many years. We have first and the second, we had questions, and Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Four to zip. Departmental commentary, item number 10. Director Ianson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just receiving a few calls about how to get rid of brush and branches. They don't fit if you're doing too deal on the airways, can, or bad. They can be bundled in 18-inch bundles, or 4 foot long, and branches can seem finished in a hurry, and if you're trying to, a micro, a little plant.
And that information is on our, our website as well.
Yes, sir.
Yes. So, if anybody is watching this and need that information, they can go to our website and look that information up, as we've got a lot of rain and some pretty heavy winds here at Lake, and some trees, branches have definitely come down in different areas. All right. Thank you, Director Ianson. And how is the summer mowing program going? Has that started yet?
Actually, it has been very successful, and we've made great progress. We've got 30 and 40, and we're good.
So, the summer mowing program, for some of you that don't know, we have a lot of vacant lots in town, and we have young men that come in from college over the last several years that take on the responsibility of cutting the vacant lots down and mowing them so that the houses around them don't look bad. So, it's been a great program over the years, and last year, we had some difficulty getting people to work, but this year, we got a staff of three, which is terrific.
Yep.
And our, our lead inspector, Bob Serrano, also helped with the program last year, quite a bit last year. So, very thankful for the work that you guys do in helping our city look beautiful. In fact, I received a call this weekend over Father's Day from a high school coach and his wife. They were driving through town, and they commented, they were driving through town, how great the city looked. So, they want to send their regards to everyone that's been involved, including our residents that take care of their property. All right. Director Roberts?
Thanks, sir. Kind of tag on here with Director Ianson. I'm still seeing a lot of, and we're receiving a lot of calls, of individual residents mowing, cutting their grass, mowing it into the streets. That goes directly down into and starts clogging storms, which then can cause backups continuously. And we know there's a brainstorm coming in. We usually get out there and we start trying to help clean the block the best we can. However, we have approximately 4,900 cap spaces within the streets throughout the city, and we have a nine-man herd. So, that's the minimum 500 basis per, per gram, to try and keep them cleaned out. We ask for residents' help with that. If you can't clean it, if it's flooding, call us immediately so we can take it out or reroute whoever's out there. We're open to that, Eric.
Yes. Especially during trash days and recycling day sometimes, because it's not a perfect process, trash just gets out and it blows around. And as we've talked about for so many years, if our residents would help with this, take 30 minutes a month to help with simple items like this, it would defer a lot of problems. It would decrease us having a lot of those problems. So, if you see some plastic or bottles or debris in your storm drain on the street, pick it up. It helps quite a bit. So, thank you, Director Roberts, if you were through.
No, I didn't, no, sir.
All right. Chief Street?
Well, good evening again, Mayor and Commissioners. Summer is essentially here, and we're looking at a pretty extended period of 90 degree-plus days, so we, just like we tell our firefighters and paramedics to keep hydrated and keep cool, we would ask the same of our residents. And if there's cooling center needs, get in touch with us. We'll post that information on our website. There are moving centers available around the city if needed, and just try and stay cool. The other thing I would say is there's some flyers at the podium, but we're hosting a blood drive on Saturday, July 13th. There's always a critical need for blood nationwide, but certainly in our area as well, both for hospitals and accident victims and cancer patients. So we would ask our residents and visitors to consider supporting our blood drive, July thirteenth. And that's posted on our Facebook page as well. Nine AM to two PM at Station One, right at our fire station one.
Right on.
The toilets are great, but walk-ins are fine too.
Twenty seventh and El Shish, that's Fire Station One. That's great. And what happens if you're afraid of needles and want to give blood?
They're very good at what they do. You won't feel a thing.
No stress, you're done.
That one, one of those was an honest person. Come that day to figure out which one was the truth.
I'll approve in the budget some lollipops. July thirteenth?
Thirteenth?
Thank you, Chief Street.
You're welcome.
Chief Barton?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you. Just wanted to kind of touch on nostalgia days. We had a great show, about five hundred cars showed up for the car show event. And a lot of people walking around, having a good time, grabbing some food, listening to music. Really good show. We, I'm not aware of any, any major incidents that happened throughout the entire show. So very, very much a big thank you to the organizers of the event and and to those that came up. It was a great show. There were, we had on display our, a lot of people commented on our drones, our bike unit, our little mini expo that we had at twenty seventh and Sherman. But speaking of the bikes, there, I just want to remind everyone that Park District is doing concert in the parks on Thursday, starting this Thursday. And we will have bike officers out there for that. So feel free to stop them, say hi, and talk about these cool new bikes that we got.
All right, thank you, Chief Barton. Director Conway?
I don't have anything tonight.
All right. Thanks for being here.
Always fun. I just want to ride one of the bikes, but they're not letting me, so I have no comment.
All right, we'll work on that. Right, Chief?
Thank you, Mayor.
I have a very similar bike and you could ride mine.
Does he have lights in the driver's?
Yeah, very much, almost the same. Chief Barton's ridden my bike.
Did he return it?
He did, yes, he did, yeah. Maybe not in the same condition or.
I didn't keep my eye on him all around.
It was going pretty fast, actually.
All right. Administrator Nabel?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. I've been talking about it for quite a while, the Dollars and Cents series that I used to do years ago, pre-COVID, which was a opportunity for citizens to come out and ask questions about why the city does what we do, what what we actually are responsible for, how we go about it. I would pick a topic basically and for an hour, give a little presentation on reasons behind the decisions we make and what goes into it and just educate people about the city and about government processes. It went away after COVID or during COVID and has not come back yet. With everything that's been going on, with tax discussions and with tax bills going out. The first session I ever did was on understanding your tax bill and levy processes. I want to bring that back and start that off again. This is a good time of year to do it. So July eleventh at six o'clock, six PM, we'll be kicking that off. I have not yet determined a location. We used to do it as all the, they closed one, I believe, on that day. So, but stay tuned on our social media pages and I'll announce it at July second meeting if we have a location. But please, anyone who wants to come out and have a chance to ask questions and understand the city better, it's a great opportunity.
Administrator Nabel, thanks for bringing that back. It's such a great tool for us and it's one of the things that we've tried to do over the last nine or ten years, the nine years I've been involved with the council, to bring transparency to what's happening in our city. We don't hide things. Our meetings are public and when people have the questions about things, our residents come here. While we might not answer them during the public comment section, we always set aside time after the meeting for them to talk to one of the department has about an issue that they're having. One of the things that we would like to see as Administrator Nabel brings this series back is that we usually would have probably five to ten people come to these events and they're the same five or ten people. And it's great that they're interested, but it's so crucial that people come up and get honest answers through transparency about what we're doing. And that's been something that we've made an effort to do over the last, when Mayor Hill did the same thing, some of these programs started when Mayor Hill was here, my predecessor. And we've continued to do that and will continue to be transparent with anything that we're doing throughout the city. So thank you for that, Administrator Nabel. Before I get to Commissioners and their departmental commentary, we have a very special guest here with us this evening, State Rep Joyce Mason. And speaking of taxes and SEGA money, she wants to have an opportunity to explain some of the things that have been going on, that have been in question publicly about the SEGA grant that the City of Zion worked hard to get. And of course, Senator Mason, excuse me, State Rep Mason, I'm giving you a promotion already. Yes, has worked diligently and hard with the other state reps and senators in Lake County to get this legislation passed. This is the woman that wrote the legislation. And while we have tried to explain pretty thoroughly about the legislation, some people say, well, you're not telling the truth about it. So we asked the person that wrote this to come in and talk to our residents that are listening and the ones that are here about the legislation. So without further ado, you may take the podium. Oh, we had a gold mic for her, didn't we?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. And everyone hearing me okay?
We can hear you just fine.
If you will also indulge me, I have a guest with me that I'd like to introduce for those of you who haven't met her. Andrea Hall joined my office this year. She is doing community outreach and she is often the person that you will see at the community hub that's happening with some of the Zion, at our neighborhood office hours in Zion every other Tuesday and in Winter Harbor every other Tuesday. So she's gonna, and at these meetings when I can't attend. So she's gonna be out and about in the community and is just lovely. And if you need anything from us, we'd like to answer.
Well, welcome, Andrea, and great to see you again.
Thank you. That being said, I, we're moving along so efficiently, now I'm running into a grinding halt, but I'll try to be as quick as I can. I'm State Representative Joyce Mason. In 2021, I co-sponsored and helped pass state legislation known as SEGA, the Clean Energy Jobs Act. It takes steps to address our climate crisis, move to a hundred percent renewable energy, create good, paying clean energy jobs and bringing employment training and opportunities to communities like ours, those who have been affected financially by environmental pollution by big energy companies. As this legislation was being drafted, we saw a rare opportunity to help repair the damage to our community that was caused by the decommissioned nuclear power plant that sits on our shores. I worked incredibly hard, along with Mayor McKinney, Administrator Dave Nabel, Attorney Jimmy Veselli, to negotiate language in this bill that would ensure that the Zion community received funding and most importantly, property tax relief for residents and businesses who have been buried for so long trying to make up the funds that were lost with the closing of the plant, trying to hold up the whole community that suddenly found itself in dire need. I consider the language that I negotiated into this legislation to be my greatest achievement in the five years I've been serving because I know how much people in our community are hurting. I hear from people every single day who are losing their homes, who are being forced to move, who can no longer afford to pay their rent, who are making impossible choices between mortgage, rent payments, taxes, groceries, medication, medical care, school supplies, power repairs, and other basic needs. I've been so proud of this legislation and I've eagerly awaited the day when this money, almost fifteen million dollars a year, would start flowing into the community and to the residents who have struggled for so long. And to be able to give extra funds to our local taxing bodies, including our schools, our police, our fire, our township, our parks, libraries, so we could all do more and offer more as we work together to build this community up. Recently, there have been a great many statements in a newspaper article regarding this money. And as the person who authored this section of the legislation that is bringing this funding in and as the person who passed this legislation in our state house or our community, I think it's really important to make some facts clear. This money is coming from state legislation that state legislators passed. When drafting this legislation, the legislative intent from day one was and has always been to provide substantial property tax relief to the people of our community to ease their burden and then to provide additional funds to our taxing bodies. It is up to the state legislature and no one else to determine where this money will be allocated. It is not up to any taxing body and it is not up for negotiation or debate. The plan to provide property tax relief has been public from day one. In the press release I issued on September ninth, 2021, I'm quoted as saying, "I'm grateful that we found a legislative solution that will provide much needed property tax relief to the people and businesses of Zion." And the heading of this press release, "Mason Secures Property Tax Relief and Decarbonization with Clean Energy Bill." In fact, in this very chamber in 2021, I was so humbled to have received a proclamation thanking me for my efforts. And we discussed the property tax relief that would be forthcoming right here at this podium. And in subsequent meetings with all stakeholders, the legislative intent was made clear over and over again. And anyone who tells you differently is simply not being honest with you. Let me be completely clear, as an educator, as the proud mom of a teacher here in our community, a sister of a retired teacher, a former vice president of the Woodland School Board, a member of the House K through twelve Elementary and Education Curriculum and Policies Committee, and the current chairperson of the House Childcare Accessibility and Early Childhood Education Committee, I am and always have been committed to providing the best education to the kids here. I fully understand the gaps that exist and those that don't. I was advocating for the evidence-based funding model for education that brings schools more money in struggling communities from the state before I ever even dreamed of running for state representative. I was stuffing envelopes and making speeches and passing out yard signs. And I watched in Springfield as it passed and I've watched it make a difference in the schools. And we, I have spent considerable time advocating for additional money to be spent in our state budget to go to K through twelve education. I also helped Governor Pritzker implement Smart Start this year, which puts a tremendous amount of funding and capital funding and this year alone added five thousand new preschool spots in locations like Beach Park, which is known to be a childcare desert. This year, we added three hundred and fifty million additional dollars to our K through twelve schools to help them catch up. And I will keep fighting for more. Additionally, I've allocated millions in operational and capital funds to this perfectly district, providing more funding for schools, parks and playgrounds, roads, municipal buildings, public safety initiatives, equipment, the lakefront, and Illinois Beach State Park. And yes, stormwater management, too. My office volunteers at the Zion Mobile Food Pantry and I have donated thousands of dollars in supplies to residents of this community and to teachers working in this community. I understand the needs of this community. But Zion has a great many needs and the intent of the legislation that was passed by the state can and will provide significant property tax relief to our community and infuse additional funding to our schools and other taxing bodies. In doing so, our community will be a place where families can afford to live, will want to move to, that want to learn here, recreate here, do business, and open businesses, along with adding better supports for our first responders who protect us and keep our streets safer. We're on our way to better days in this community because we took all of that into consideration, went very carefully crafting this legislation together. And I'm so grateful from Mayor McKinney, Administrator Dave Nabel, Attorney Jimmy Veselli, for all of the work that they put into this. If people have questions about the state legislation and the legislative intent that existed from day one and has been publicly discussed, I'd be happy to discuss them with those that want to have respectful dialogue. But what I'm disappointed by and what I won't accept and what has to stop are lies, half-truths, name-calling, or public rants by those who weren't given the full information. And I will never accept fund-warranted attacks on our Zion officials who have worked and continue to work so hard for this community. They work day and night and weekends to help meet the needs of their residents. I wish you guys could see them day by day and see all the work that them and their teams do. And quite honestly, we should all be expressing gratitude to them for their care, concern, and service. I know it, so many people know it. I am grateful to you as community leaders and as my partner in helping to make this community better. So I thank you and I am always happy to answer additional questions about this and I will continue to clarify the intent of this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, State Rep Joyce Mason. And we thank you endlessly because we know when we have an issue here and there's funding needs, grants needs, that you and our Senator Mariette Lee Allen have been terrific in working with us. You've been true community partners that understand the challenges of this community, the challenges that we face, that, and the projection of what we're trying to do to improve this community. So thank you for your work around the clock. We can never thank you enough. And thank you for being here and clarifying for that. I know there's a school board meeting on September twentieth, excuse me, I'm sure that's September, but in June, June twenty fifth, if I'm right. And we certainly would appreciate it if you would make those statements there to clarify to their board and their superintendent exactly what this legislation was intended for. So thank you for coming tonight. Does any of our Commissioners have any questions for State Rep Mason?
I'll just echo the thanks of you, Mayor McKinney. Thank you so much for writing this legislation. And it's always been clear to us the intent of it. And you just made that double observe, so thank you again.
So I echo that. Thank you.
All right, I, we're all in agreement here. I would add, if possible, could a copy of your statement be provided to the clerk to be included in the minutes? It'll, it'll make her job a little easier. I also want to note what Chief Barton said earlier about nostalgia days. A big hand to Sonny Lebronson and the nostalgia days committee and everybody else who worked on making that event come off. I mean, it went really well.
It was terrific.
So a great start to the summer.
All right. Thank you again, State Rep Mason. Andrea, and thank you for for being here and taking copious notes. Commissioner, any comments tonight? Commissioner Holmes?
I just want to have a sort of comment around the Fourth of July. I'm just wondering if someone could remind residents, you know, in terms of fireworks, what is allowed, what's not allowed. Chief Barton?
Anything that goes boom.
And I know Commissioner Holmes, one of the things that we've done since we passed the ordinance about the commercial-grade fireworks that are illegally, a federal crime, transporting them across state lines to here, that we send out notice to the offenders that continue to disrupt the tranquility of our community on the Fourth of July. And the biggest thing about it, when trying to explain this to people, you're not taking into account to other veterans that have PTSD. Can you imagine being in a war, coming home in peace and tranquility in your living room and you're hearing this going off? The danger that it poses them, the health risk, the mental health risk, same with pets, seniors, kids, and the threat to your neighbors. If you are not qualified to handle these commercial-grade fireworks, you can burn your neighbor's house down or your house down. So I know in the past with the offenders, there have been letters going out to those families, if I'm correct, that let them know that, to remind them, a quiet reminder that it will not be tolerated in our, in our city. I've also had an opportunity to talk with Congressman Brad Snyder at one of the community meetings with all the mayors and ask about maybe some federal legislation being put into place about carrying this stuff across state lines. We're close to Wisconsin, they have it, and from Iowa to Illinois, from Indiana to Illinois, about putting some teeth into, into some of the legislation for people that are caught with these, I want to say, these big noise makers. I want to say something else, but I have to. Anyway, that is being addressed. And I think the Police Department and our Fire Department for the attention that they give to this and preempting this by sending out the letters and letting people know that we are, we are watching. And the best thing residents can do, if you have someone that's setting off illegal fireworks in your neighborhood, call the police, give them their address. And then they will get a visit to their. And then they will get a visit to their house and they can explain it. So, Commissioner Fisher?
No, I think we already covered this, so.
All right. Well, I don't have much to say this evening, which Director Conway is saying, thank goodness.
Why are you saying?
You're eyeball the director of that. Just messing with you.
I don't know.
I think State Rep Mason said it all for me as I get to the announcement. I want to thank everyone for coming to this, our city council meeting tonight. And for those that watch, because I've received a lot of comments from the last city council meeting about people being supportive of our efforts to present tax relief to our residents for all the reasons that State Rep Mason talked about. Item number eleven is announcement July second. There's a city council meeting at seven PM, right here. Bring friends next time. July fourth, the city offices are closed for the Fourth of July and we'll get more information that we'll announce on the second, on the second about plans from the Park District, about what events they will have going at the Zion Park District. July sixteenth, six PM, there's a Zion Township Board meeting and at seven PM, it's followed by a Zion City Council meeting. And item number twelve that everyone has been dying to get to is their motion to adjourn. So motion by McDowell, second by Holmes. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries four zip. Thank everyone, drive safe, stay cool out there and hydrated. Hold.